I call the meeting order. Fairfax City Council, March 14, 2017. Everybody get your eyes for the fudge allegiance, please.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call everybody's present, what agenda? And then one of the approval of the agenda is presented. Any additions or corrections? Now can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Josh makes motion.
Second.
Rick second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There's no unfinished business. No public hearings. We're on the bid openings and quotes, removal of the home at 25 First Street Northeast. I'm guessing that this is here.
Did you get another one?
No. I didn't get one, so.
It looks like we have two job estimates here. One is for before the, or not doing a house burn and one is with doing a house burn. The one without doing a house burn is total of $24,000. And then the one to clean up after a house burn is only $12,000. Are there any other additional costs really associated with burning it down?
Just be $500 for an asbestos inspection and then roughly, I think it's about $5000 to this school. Right around $2,000.
So you'd still be saving $10,000?
$15,000 usually reimbursed.
Correct. Well then you'd be saved.
Who was the who bid the $24,000?
Well, they're both from Fay Clogus. But one was, the $24,000 is if it's not burnt down to remove it. And the $12,000 is to remove it after it's been burnt down. And that includes fill and level site degrade. And I mean, they do make a disclaimer that Fay Clogus is not responsible for removal or disposal of asbestos. And just so it's noted, I guess. Kind of makes sense to burn it down, I would think. And then having cleaned it up after that. Get a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Rick makes motion.
I'll second that motion.
Ralph seconded. Do accept the bid of $12,000 and proceed with burning the house down. All those in favors?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'll just wait and watch. Did you get all that then?
Yeah, I did.
That's a very way to go.
Okay. Just having a moment.
Nope. And then we got Joel, not great tech here to do the presentation on the 2016 financial audit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel Stenzel from my Bailey. As you mentioned, here to present the 2016 financial statement audit. If you think my text things are bad, wait till you see my speaking. You have received this evening the 38-page financial statement on page two of this executive summary. You received a clean opinion and it walked you through what that is. That means it's materially correct and in conformance with generally accepted auditing standards and accounting principles. Further goes into describe how that doesn't mean that there's not fraud occurring. What it does mean is that we didn't find anything because if we did, we would be required to communicate that to you long before a public meeting. So with that, we go into what is the executive summary where we kind of go through and we summarize in a little bit more, in my opinion, understandable data as it relates to what happened in 2016. I will go through this relatively quickly. If you have any questions, seeing there are some new faces on the council, please stop me. We'll go through any questions you might have. You'll also get my contact information at the end should you have questions after this that you didn't want to bring up at this point in time. With that, we start with cash and cash equivalents of the general fund. And this is on page three of that handout that the council has received or to my right. Cash down $185,000 in the general fund over 2015. For those of you who want to take a nap, you'll see that the lights can turn down. Revenues and expenses of the general fund are on page four. Revenues were down $836 over 2015 and expenses were down $18,250 over 15. We'll talk about those more on a later page. As you can see at the bottom, how we made up this $327,000 shortfall were transfers from the electric of $185,000, natural gas of $101,000. The $158,000 transfer out is for debt payments to the debt service fund. As promised on the next page, page five, we look at expenses of the general fund. As I noted before, down $18,000. If we started the top general government, down $20,000. That was due to some bond issuance costs with the 2015 street project that happened in 2015 that did not repeat. Public safety, those expenses were up $30,000 over the prior year due to an increase in salaries and wages and benefits. Salaries and wages were about $21,000. Health insurance was about $9,000 over the prior year. Streets and highways, we saw a decrease, or I'm sorry, hold on one second. A decrease there of $54,000 again, engineering fees for that 2015 street project that did not repeat in 2016. The next item of significance is culture and recreation, which was up $69,000 over the prior year. The bike trail and the project that was done on that is in that expense account as well as salaries and benefits were up $13,000. Capital outlay was down $44,000. In 2016, our significant projects were the finishing up of the auditorium remodels, resurfacing the task carts and the purchase of the grass rack. Revenues, as I noted before, were down a whopping $836. The points of significant changes were property taxes were up $9,500, special assessments down $15,000. We had a decrease of about $21,000 in LGA. And then charges for services were up about $23,000. The significant piece there were ambulance revenues from 2015 to 2016. And rounding that out was the $5,300 increase in investment earnings. We now skip to what appears to be a very confusing graph of cash and cash equivalents. What we've done is we've put all of the enterprise funds. So as you can see, there are water, sewer, storm sewer, electric, natural gas, liquor and HRA Southview and Fairview. So we've just kind of graphed these out so you can see where they were at. The only two funds that saw a decrease in cash balances were the water fund, which went down about $62,000 and the liquor fund, which was down $78,000 over 2015. I can go through the rest if you like, but there again, the remainder of the funds saw some type of increase anywhere from $2,500 to $132,000, which was the electric fund. Now to break down revenues and expenses. The first one here is actually the water fund. We saw an increase in revenue of about $3,300. That's just for charges for gallons pumped and an increase in expense of $13,000. As you can see here, operating income were above $82,000 when you compare that 350 to the 267. The reason for the increase in expense was an increase in depreciation of about $4,700. And then pension expenses or GAZB-68, which is, for those of you unfamiliar, I'll try to catch you up in about 15 seconds. Currently, PERA is underfunded. What we have to do as the city is we have to recognize our portion based on contributions into the plan of what is underfunded. So what happened in 2016 is that went from a $373,000 liability that the city had to a $527,000 liability that the city has. There's nothing that we do differently. We continue to contribute into PERA as we always have. And then every year, an actuary sits down, takes a look and says, okay, based on current participants, their retirement benefits they'll receive, how much is PERA underfunded? So that's a number that from your chair, we can't control. And so we call that pretty much an auditor number. That was up $17,000 and then materials and supplies were down $57,000 over the prior year. The next page, this is sanitary sewer, up $1,000 on the revenue side. Net investment earnings were down, sales were up as well as penalties were up a little bit over 2015. From the expenditure standpoint, we're up $443,000, or $443 rather, not $443,000. GAZB-68 again took effect here, which increased about $8,000 over the prior year with the offset being decreased materials and supplies of about $6,000. Moving on to storm sewer. Revenues were up $2,000. Again, this is just a charges for services thing based on a number of gallons. And then expenses were up $5,400 due mainly to repairs and maintenance over 2015. The next fund is the electric fund on page 11. Revenues were down $74,000. Commercial sales were down $91,000 over the prior year, offset by an increase in residential and other sales of $14,000. Expenses were up $10,000. Pension and salaries actually pretty much netted themselves up to zero here. And then purchased power and supplies and materials were the reason for the increase in this fund. Everybody doing okay here? Doing a fine job of tapping everyone so on. The next is natural gas. Revenues were $24,000, expenses were up $23,000. Here again, the nice part about this, as you can see, is based on the amount of revenue we have, the expense follows just based on how we purchase that and how those contracts are set up. So a nice, the difference between revenues and expenses were about $245,000 of operating income. Expenses though, were up $23,000. Here again, pension rears, it's ugly head up, $15,000 over the prior year and then some additional natural gas purchases over 2015.
Am I safe to assume that 2014, you said that's just we had a higher price we were paying for the
Exactly.
Natural gas and then you charged more for it and that's why the gap.
Yeah, it continues just to kind of go. It's a beautiful model to keep that blue line above that red line. Any other questions? Go. Okay. The liquor fund, this is a little bit of a more interesting model here with revenues and expenses. Revenues were down $3700 over the prior year. How that netted out is liquor sales were down about $5,000, beer was down about $1,000, wine up four, and then food sales were down $2,000. The issue, as you can see, is that red line took a nice swooping turn above our blue line there, which was up about $58,000. The significant factor again, you guessed it, pension. That was up about $40,000 over the prior year. So that's a pretty significant hit when you're talking about trying to operate the liquor fund at a positive balance. Other increases included salaries and wages of $3,500. Insurance was up $3,000 and we had some supply expenses that were up $6,000 over the prior year. The key that you need to be made aware of from a council standpoint is that if you, if and or when you lose money two out of three years, according to Minnesota statute, you have to have a public hearing that addresses if we're going to keep the liquor fund open and why. So here again is an interesting graph of operating income or loss. So what you'll see is the only fund that had a negative in the current year was the liquor fund of $32,000. Our most profitable fund from at least an operations standpoint was natural gas at $268,000. And the remainder that are kind of fell in, water, $82,000, sanitary sewer, up $91,000, storm sewer, $36,000 and so on. Oh dear. I don't suppose Marcia, you could back me up real quick? Sorry.
That one?
Yes. One more. Can you? Sorry.
That didn't come along.
That didn't, yes, thank you. So here, what this is taking into account are investment earnings and other things, but this does not take into account transfers to other funds. So the water transferred out $37,000, sewer $10,000, storm sewer $36,000, electric $185,000 and natural gas $101,000. So you have to factor that against the numbers that you see here. Even so, at this point in time, not to pick on the liquor fund again, but I will, that was the only fund that showed a net income loss or loss. So then, if I'm patient. Funds payable, because there was no new debt issue in the current year, all of these are trending downward. The water fund has $1.1 million, natural gas $1.3 and HRA Southview has a $62,000 loan still outstanding at the end of the year. Nothing to be concerned about here, just kind of wanted to show this in more of a graphical format of what's in the financial statements. Internal controls and Minnesota legal compliance. I'm happy to report that there are no Minnesota legal compliance. Material weaknesses in internal controls. We have a segregation of duties issued due to the size of staff. We as auditors are asked to prepare the financial statements and propose a couple of significant journal entries as it relates to the audit process. These are what we call the big three findings because of the 40 governments that I currently work on. We have two who have been able to get rid of that significant journal entry finding. So again, not a lot of concern here with what's happening. It's just a matter of we're required to communicate these to you. And having said that, my contact information here is on the last page as well as on the screen. And I do want to, maybe I'm not the first, but I do want to thank Marcia for everything she's done, especially over the past. I've been working with Marcia for 17 years and it's been a great experience and she does an amazing job. And although you might not see it now, I think she will be greatly missed. I know highball when she's gone. So thank you, Marcia, for all that you do and I wish you the best if you get to the big award. With that, I open it up to any questions, comments or concerns you might have at this time.
Joel, can you go back to page 15?
Not on the screen. But yes, I'd be happy to.
When I look at 15 and you talked about that proprietary funds, net loss income or net income loss. And you said the liquor fund was the one that went down. What about the electric one? That one also appears to have gone down or am I?
And when I say up or down, this is just isolated to that period. So you're right, as it relates to, we had a $375,000 gain in 2015, but we also had a $289,000 gain revenues exceeding expenses in 2016. So the net income itself, when comparing the two years, was down, but overall revenues exceeded expenses in all funds, other than the liquor. Does that help?
Yep. I just didn't quite understand what that was, so I wanted to ask.
Perfect, absolutely. Who has the next question? Perfect. You have my contact information, so if you do have additional questions, please feel free to reach out at any time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. We gotta look at all kinds of stuff this year. Perfect.
Don't forget to accept it.
Need a motion to approve the audit as presented by Joel?
So move.
Josh made the motion.
I'll second.
Rick second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Then we're on to the consent agenda. Is there any discussion that needs to be had about any of those items? If not, we'll move on. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Rick makes motion.
Second.
Josh seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Then we're on to Mr. Kicker and his fire calls within city limits. Did you get anything? Otherwise we did get a fair representation, I believe.
Marcia should have a couple other ones, basically pretty close to what you had this same.
Redwood falls $500 and Long does not charge in town. Franklin is $750 for the first hour and $100 per hour after that. And, no, no quote from Sufi.
Yeah, Sufi, I didn't get a response. It was dry and they didn't return the call.
Well, for the other eight that Jenny obtained, only one did not charge for in the city. So seven out of eight did. So I'm saying that's, is that better information, Ralph?
Yep, and I also did a little other digging too, just because I kind of wanted to see where we were population wise. And I don't know, you know, I came and Marcia gave me some stuff from the Department of Revenue and, you know, who, what percentage of which townships we cover for fire. And when I looked at those numbers and I just used a percentage because it said percentage of this county and percentage of that county, it looked like we had, I mean, if these numbers are right and if my math is right, both suspect 735 rural and 1,235 in the city. And then she explained to me how the, how the sharing of those expenses worked. And that's kind of what I wanted was I just, I didn't want to make a decision without knowing what we were really doing.
I get it.
So yeah, I'm glad that I had a chance to look at that and glad that we got all that other information.
So with that, is there any other discussion on making it the same for rural and in-town calls?
I don't think we should. City taxpayers pay to move the snow, they shovel the sidewalk, do maintenance, which township that, or the world doesn't pay for nor that today, Marcia. So the city people pay a little more in the long run for the two maintenance. So I think it should just stay the same.
Well, I mean, the only benefit to it is the insurance that's covered on the other end and having the homeowner's policy done so it gets found it. I don't know if we can get a motion in a second, I guess we could.
I guess I think it should be the same for both. I'd make the motion to go ahead and make the same for city and township.
Josh makes a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Ralph seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carries. And then we're on to American Legion Auxiliary with Dorothy.
Can I stay here or go out?
You can stay there if you'd like.
I will stay.
Then everybody can hear you.
Okay. I have to?
We make everybody else.
Okay, I'm here tonight, thank you for allowing me some time. I'm here tonight on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary. At our last meeting held in February on the 16th, many of our members noted that there was no flag in the new community center. There has always been a flag up until the time of the remodeling project. So we discussed it at length and decided we would like to donate a flag for the big room. Now since that time, there has been a flag placed in the small room in a stand on the floor. We discussed both options of having a flag in a stand on the floor or having it on the wall like it used to be. We thought that a flag in a stand on the floor would be very vulnerable to the public. The room is rented out a lot to organizations, businesses, families. There'll be graduations where the mix is both adult and children. Children are attracted to flags and we just feel that it would be, like I use the word vulnerable. They would, they would maybe play with it, it shouldn't be done, it could maybe be tipped over, which could happen. We wouldn't want it to, but it could. And the other option was hanging it on the wall like the old one was, which is the option we are in favor of. It's out of the way, it's always in the right spot, it's part of the decor like the screen, like the clock. There's a lot of wall space, north wall, south wall, east wall. That would be up to the council to place it where they want it. We just thought it would be low maintenance once it's on the wall, just lower to nothing actually. And it can be seen from any place. If you're standing or sitting in the big room, the flag is on the wall, it's there, it's easy to be seen. So anyway, bear with me just for a minute here. This is what our members came up with. And it says, "To the Fairfax City Council. The Fairfax American Legion of Villar, BBM Unit 205, has voted on and unanimously passed the motion to donate an American flag to be hung either vertically or horizontally in the large room of the Fairfax Community Center. If this donation is accepted by the Fairfax City Council, it will be donated with the following conditions. One, the council will determine the size of the flag up to six by 10 feet. The flag will be ordered from the National Emblem Sales of the American Legion. The cost and shipping to be paid by the auxiliary. The city of Fairfax will be responsible for the installation of the flag. The city of Fairfax will be responsible for the maintenance of the flag, which I said should be just low to nothing if it's on the wall." Agreed through this blank area of whatever. Our president, Don Blake, has already signed this. We need a signature of the mayor, acting mayor. One copy for the city file, one copy for ours. And then it, another little bit says, "Please circle the size wanted and material desired and return in the self-addressed stamped envelope as soon as possible." The flag sizes are on here and the material, cotton, nylon, polyester. And these are choices to be made by the council. We'd like to have this, we sincerely hope that you will consider our donation very seriously. We want to do this and we'd like to have it done before Memorial Day. And it seems like the front of the room is like facing the screen, it would be to the east wall, I believe, where the screen is and the clock. There's lots of wall space. I think it would look nice, that's just my personal opinion. I think that's about all. Any, I mean, it's very simple, it's either yes or no, I guess that sort of boils down to. So it's up to you guys, you don't have to decide now, but let us know. If it's no, we'd like to know the reason why our donation was rejected. And if it's yes, it's just a matter of circling the size, serving the date, and they'll order it and get it done. So I will leave this with you, Marcia? Who should I get it to? There's a little folder on a flag etiquette, how to hang it. Oh, and just a note, the O flag, coincidentally, I had called the city office a couple weeks before our meeting and asked what happened to the O flag and nobody knows. It's gone. So hopefully if somebody took it home, folded it and put it on a closet shelf and forgot about it, rather than being balled up and thrown in a dumpster. That would be bad. So, and the flag that was in there, just a little side note, was donated by Stella Repke, who is now in our nursing home. She's in her 90s, a sister to Salma Culk Maxwell. And I asked Salma this morning, did Stella have something in mind when she donated the flag? And she said, no, she was just very patriotic and that's why the flag was there for many years. So I hope, like I say, consider our donation. We really would like to do this, to have it hung at the discretion of the council vertically, horizontally. Thank you.
Is there a recommendation as to what kind of fabric you use on inside versus outside or whatever?
Those are, well, let's see, they can be outside, but there won't be, I mean, they'll last long if they're inside. Polyester, let's see, it's cotton, nylon, polyester, it's good, better, best. And there are two, it's up to the discretion of the council what they would prefer. We just think it's better to have it up on the wall, out of the way, always in the right place, easy to be seen, just there. So any other questions, anybody? Okay, thank you for your time. We hope if you agree, we'd like to have this up by Memorial Day. Thank you.
I guess the only question is, is there anybody that has sized, potential size request in there or anything like that? I guess, I mean, just kind of go measure and see how it would fit would be above the other, to know what size to order if it's approved.
Yeah, depends on where you want it. Yeah. Four by six or something really good.
I mean, just so it's not too small or too big. I mean, I suppose you can look into that and maybe just see what it would cost to hang it, which I'm sure won't cost you guys much to do it all. And then maybe just kind of check out what maybe you think would be the best size fitting for. And then we can motion it to, or table it to next meeting. We have motion for that?
Yeah, we accept it.
Yeah, well, yeah, but just the, the only, yeah, okay, motion, but then.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
The only thing pending will be the size and how to hang it and what. The only thing pending will be the size and how to hang it, and we'll, maybe we can decide that at the next meeting.
So I'll make the motion to accept the donation.
Josh makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Rick seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Simple letter wrapped it on itself, so, hang on.
And then around the Resolution 2017 dash 04, and that's about organizing the golf course advisory board.
Can I ask a question?
What?
Let's see what I have. Come on here. Alright, so, I'm just hearing bits and pieces about the golf course, and I just wanted to get some information on it. Um, I was hearing that the city is going to be giving funds towards this project. Is that correct?
To which extent did you hear, I guess?
I heard that the golf course was going to be receiving a donation from the city? From the EDA?
And that's for multi-use equipment, from what I understand as well. That can be used between the Mayflower and the Ford?
Is there a reason why that the city is going beyond Rennell County to give money? I saw the mission statement was for the EDA, was for the city of Fairfax, so... I was curious why we were going beyond Rennell County.
But, I guess that's just what they decided at the EDA meeting, which I was in present at, because I was at a conference.
Mr. Walton, can they give money to outside the county?
Run that by me again.
The EDA pledged, I believe, $15,000.
To purchase equipment.
To be used multi-use between the Mayflower and for the golf course.
It's not tax dollars. I thought you were considering, because the EDA is funding from what we built the Country View Estates. And then 10 years later, we sold it to the nursing home. That's where the dollars came from.
And they returned funds from the loan to RS Fibers, is that correct?
Yes. RS Fiber, we had loaned, we had loaned $15,000 to the RS Fiber Cooperative too. And those funds are coming back to us now. We, we loaned that out for five years. Now they're paying back. So that's outside the community too, basically. It's all economic development.
Are we a partner of the RS Fiber? We are not really a partner of the golf course.
I mean, in all, in all due respect, though, this is the EDA and not the city technically. I mean, they're two separate organizations. I guess.
That's a, the EDA board?
Yeah, that, that was the last Thursday, or week ago, Thursday's meeting. Which I guess, I was under the understanding that they agreed upon that since it was going to be multi-use amongst more than just one entity.
But I guess I can't directly respond to that.
I'm just curious if it was legal that they could do it or not. So, I guess that would be my concern before the city does it, is to check into it to make sure that it's something legal that you're doing.
I'd consider it economic, but...
Do you want me to look at it again?
I would like you to, as a resident of Fairfax.
But it is not tax dollars that's going into it. The EDA hasn't asked for an appropriation from the city council in years, ever since we sold Country View Estates. Have not had one appropriation.
What?
Where did their original money come from for the year?
Where did their original money come from for the EDA is what was asked.
Oh, well, the, at the beginning, it was $2,000, but, but we bonded for the Country View Estates project the EDA did with approval of the city council. And then that's where the money came from, is on the sale of the Country View Estates. So the city didn't put money into that bond issue. The EDA bonded for Country View Estates and realized a profit from selling Country View Estates.
You're going way back now.
What?
Going way back?
You're going back to the beginning, okay.
I, I think it's fair to, to request that it gets looked into.
Yeah.
The EDA has the power to do that?
I just saw it on the website saying that it's for the city of Fairfax. So I was just concerned why it's leaving the city of Fairfax to going into a township. Then the mission statement should be changed on them, if they're going to go beyond. That's all I'm asking.
I was concerned, I mean, that'd be if an EDA, maybe come to an EDA meeting too, then, I mean, you can bring it up there.
I would love to, but I won't. Sorry, I'm not going to take off too.
Well, then that's fine. I just, I mean, that was decided there and, I mean, that was approved there, so.
I can definitely send a letter. I don't know if they'll read it on it, but sorry, I'm not going to take it forward.
We'll look into it for you.
That would be appreciated. Thank you.
So, I guess, to organize the board, it just pretty much sums up the board like any or most other boards we have here in the city. Just kinda establishes the terms and what they're subject to and their meetings and term lengths and how the records are kept. So is there any questions about the actual organization of the golf course board? I have to get a motion to approve Resolution 2017 dash 04.
I'll make that motion to approve that Resolution 2017 dash four.
Ralph makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Josh seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, I guess. And then we gotta move on to Resolution 2017 dash 05. And that's requesting a speed study on Chunk Highway 19. And is that in relation to the speed signs?
Something like that.
Yes. The speed studies gotta be done before we can put up the solar radar speed signs. So we're taking a step back and doing the speed study.
That's, okay, yeah, what?
They issued us a permit, they were supposed to, and they told us we hadn't done it before the first day of year. Well, here they overlooked.
I thought you wanted to change the speed limit or something.
Well, that's kinda the way it reads, but not just, pretty much for the, for the use of the signs, is that correct? And there's nothing going to happen with them unless something comes out of the speed study negatively?
No, that, they told us for the book, so.
Okay, just making sure.
Well, see, the, the problem is, is that the Wilmer DOT, their district office approved it. Mankato's office...
They, they approved it.
Mankato's office approved it and Wilmer's office didn't. See, the, we're in a really funny spot here with 419. Going, uh, west, it's Wilmer District Office, DOT. Going east from Highway 4, it's Mankato DOT. And when you go south down 4, it's Wyndham. So, there's all sorts of...
And the people that had a problem with it was Mankato, and they didn't even know they signed the permit.
They signed the permit. They're not even, well, yeah, they are. That sign out there.
Yeah, that sign out there.
They signed the permit.
The Wilmer signed, they didn't, they said, "Go ahead and do it."
So essentially, they're just doing the speed study to reaffirm what was already approved?
Regulations.
Yeah.
So what's involved in the speed study and what does that mean and how does that impact? I mean, isn't the speed limit set by where your highway runs and zoning and what it runs through? Isn't that?
They were going to do it to see where the speed signs should be placed.
Essentially, don't they throw out the little cord and see how fast people are coming in, out, your volume and all that stuff? Is that, in essence, what consists of them?
I think so.
But how are speed zones, how are speed limits set?
The state does a speed study.
So, I mean, if everybody drives 1,000, then it's 800 or whatever.
Well, they do it on like...
There's gotta be a rule here somewhere.
When they do it on like, you know, like housing and stuff, the surroundings. There's houses, residential area, stuff like that.
I mean, it shouldn't necessarily affect the speed limit. It's more so just to get the approval for the signs that were already approved.
That we, that we installed.
That we installed. The city already installed.
They told them, uh, for the first day of year. We did.
But I don't believe there's any adverse conditions involved with the speed studies, is that correct?
No, it's just a matter of that they have to have this resolution signed by the Fairfax City Council and then they do the speed study, then they approve the, the signed permit. It's getting backwards now, since, and it was, wasn't Scott's fault. Mankato signed the permit and Wilmer said, "Boy, can't, they wouldn't sign for this other one." Because that sign is out there. Mankato, it's a simple office, district office.
So I guess if there's no further discussion, we need a motion to pass Resolution 2017 dash 05.
I'll make that motion.
Josh makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Rick seconds. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And around the Resolution 2017 dash 06, we're gonna address the Rennell County Fire Department Mutual Aid Agreement. That was also included in the packet. Briefly, I do, that doesn't, that doesn't change any existing agreement, not really, for the new part.
You basically have to do it for FEMA, is what it all entails.
But I mean, there's no change to the, for, per se. Is there any discussion about the mutual aid agreement or questions? Not a motion to pass Resolution 2017 dash 06.
So we'll...
Josh makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Rick seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. To move on to the Personnel Committee. And there's one member present from there, or Marcia, I guess.
Yeah, I guess the Personnel Committee, we conducted interviews for the open position, and we would like to recommend hiring Chad Foggus for the utility position. That's it, right?
Do you have any more information that needs to be included, I guess?
Oh, well, I, I would assume that you want to start a Met Step 1 of the street until the maintenance position. That's 14, you know, an hour.
Again, no previous experience then, with that work? Okay, the only other, I guess, comment I'd have is if for some reason he would not accept the job, maybe you should hold a special meeting so the process can be moved along quicker instead of waiting until he goes back to reoffer. Just, I guess, a suggestion more than anything. Because otherwise, you could wait a month and then somebody else might reject. I mean, just, that's in case of rejection, but... Okay, well then, if there is any question or concern about the Personnel Committee's recommendation? Not a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Rick makes a motion.
I'll say.
Ralph seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then around the mayor's status, vacancy due to moving outside Fairfax City Limits. There's a nice little letter that he got. Due in my concern, due to unforeseen opportunity to move out of the country, I will resign my position as mayor of Fairfax because of my impeding change of residency. Your resignation shall be effective immediately following the Mark 14 council meeting. I thank everyone for the opportunity granted to me. I apologize for the short time I've served and wish all the best in the completion of everyone's terms on the council and to the city, citizens of Fairfax. So there has been discussion of a replacement. And Lois Gillis, the previous mayor, is willing to come back until the end of this year. And that's just a recommendation I've had, and that's something for you guys.
So there's two parts to this.
Okay, yeah.
First is procedurally, we would need to do a...
Motion to accept their resignation.
It would be in the form of a resolution.
Their resolution.
Resignation.
For Resolution 2017 dash 07.
Looks like it.
To accept their resignation.
And that would be effective at the conclusion of this meeting?
Yeah, that'll be moving this weekend as well.
So, a resolution to accept his resignation and appoint Lois?
No, just wanted to start.
The second part would be fill in the vacancy.
Yeah, maybe jump to that a little bit. Need a motion to approve Resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Rick makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Josh seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then on to the...
What's the next step?
Then it's fill in the vacancy.
Fill in the vacancy, which I can't really...
So, you can have, you can have that done by appointment because it's less than two years.
Appointment of the council?
Appointment of the new mayor.
Yeah, but I mean, that's appointed by the council?
Correct.
Okay, and then what about the person who's under mayor, acting mayor, whatever, do they?
Well, so, it's possible the city council member could be appointed to the mayor.
That was just a recommendation that I attacked and resolved.
Or anyone in that matter. It doesn't have to go back to the, the next person in line for election or doesn't have to have special election if it's less than two years.
But if Lois is only willing to do it till the end of this year, then we would, what, need to appoint somebody again?
Yeah, I suppose.
Who's our, who's our acting mayor when you're gone? Is that you?
Jane.
Oh, she's not here.
Well, then you have to fill her seat as well. I mean, it was just a recommendation. It's nothing that needs to be acted upon or decided here tonight, but it just was...
Maybe a suggestion would be to pick that up at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Have the acting mayor, I mean, serve for the next meeting, and then you could have at least four of you to participate and make the decision.
Well, yeah, we have a total of six meetings, counting this one between us. I, I hate to kinda do that without Jenny here. I mean, so, I guess I, but you've been here longer than me, like, so...
No, I, I, I mean, and I didn't, I didn't necessarily mean it as you had to act upon it here tonight. I just brought it up as a fact that I've talked to a few people and she was the only one that had expressed interest in it, so.
There's, there's two criteria for being mayor. One, being willing. There's two, being eligible, right? So, that's, those are good things, but, uh, I, I guess I would feel better if we, if we held off on that until we had all of us here.
Just accept the resignation and then just kinda move on, then, huh?
So, yeah, and since you've already done that, you could come back to that. Our next, next meeting's agenda.
Then we'll just kinda move on. Just the staff reports.
Um, there's building permits, Brad Ashton, the windows, $100, and Marvin Scholz, the garage, $21,000. There's still no resolution on Hartland and New Home Public Utilities billing for the transportation and the auto county gas. That's still in the, in the works. Wondering if the city council would like to advertise for seasonal maintenance position for lawnmower. And, anything else? Park maintenance, lawnmower.
Street sweeping, I suppose. They can do all that.
That'd have been something, that's kind of been something, I mean, common to have an extra person out in the summer, right?
Yeah.
Usually the lawnmower to do.
Yeah, no, but I mean, just so everybody's under the understanding.
Usually like her to do, but sometimes they, not always... Usually lifeguard to do, but sometimes they, not always, can't always be there because they'll have other-
Lifeguarding to do?
Lifeguarding games, you know, they got practices to go to and stuff like that, so.
So that's the normal practice, is to hire somebody in the summer? One or two people?
It was our normal practice.
Yeah.
That fell apart when we were, when there was some litigation on it and then we used the pool employees for a couple of years.
What was the litigation, what was the issue?
One person claimed that they were discriminated against for age.
Oh, I haven't heard that.
And then the city insurance paid out without going to court or anything. There was actually two of them that came aboard and said they were discriminated against and then, and then the insurance company paid out $10,000 to each individual. Then the next year, we thought, well, we should hire, you have to roll, because you can be just, you know.
So it's an expense that's been incurred anyways by the city for the last how many years, extra labor? Any questions or concerns about the seasonal position? Need a motion to approve the advertisement?
So move.
Josh makes motion. Ralph seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then the next thing is that I received a letter from Nicolet County, the Board of Commissioners, supporting the House File three thirty-two and seven, well, two forty-five. Supporting that the DNR lease Portridge State Park to, to the city of Fairfax Gulf Course. And along with that, the county's board resolution supports also including a one-time $5,000 pledge to the city of Fairfax to go towards the operation of capital expenses of leasing the course, should the legislation pass. We got a $5,000 pledge from Nicolet County.
So when I read that earlier in the email, and it said, if it should pass, if we reach a settlement before it passes, that, that gift is still there, that's not dependent just on whether that bill passes, because there's some talk about pulling that if we come to a resolution.
Yes, if we come to a resolution and the DNR approves and the Gulf Board approves the lease, then the legislation will be pulled.
Thank you.
Did you have any comment?
And, any questions on financial statements?
Like I understand that, so.
That's all I have, thank you.
We're on to Joel, Superintendent of the Streets Utilities.
Not much for trimming trees for a few weeks and-
Good job, Andy.
Cloud snow, you remember?
They really made the city look nice with the trimming of the trees.
Thank you very much.
I like how you had tree trimming, street sweeping, and snow plowing.
Kind of crazy, I had one of those.
Seven day spam.
Dan, is this your CMMPA item there, or is that Marcia's yet?
Okay. Joel, as far as the opportunity for them to do, to purchase subscription.
Yeah, the CMMPA that we belong to is going together with the SIMPA out of Otaun, they're gonna put up a five-megawatt solar panel. And you can buy subscriptions to them, or anybody in the community wants to be green and have a subscription to solar, they're able to purchase it. I don't know the exact prices on everything, because I wasn't to one of the meetings with the price of the subscriptions, but we also have the option to put up our own four-kilowatt solar panel that we can, instead of going through the five-megawatt one, you can put up your own four-kilowatt one that'll sit wherever, you can need like a, I think it was like a thirty by thirty area to set it on. And people could also purchase subscriptions out of that, too. And I do believe the last meeting I was at, it was right around, the cost price was about $7,300 for that four-kilowatt solar panel. And then, which is a pretty good deal, so. Just a matter of if anybody wants to do it, or if there'd be any interest in anybody from the residents to purchase subscriptions to it.
See, you need how much space?
Takes, I think that if I remember right, it said a thirty by thirty area. So you'd have to have kind of a lot that's, you know, roughly thirty by thirty, or it could be over kind of by the water tower there, maybe, possibly in the power plant lot, that could go. One could be put up, or if you didn't want to do, there's six, there's like twelve of us that belong to the CMP group, and six of them, top ones are doing it, and six aren't, so. And it's all what your interest is.
Did any discussion about those, the shingles from Tesla come up, the shingles for houses that are, produce electricity? Have you heard about those, that didn't come up at any of your meetings?
Not at any, no, not at any of those, I've never heard of them.
They say it has a better R-value, cheaper, and produces electricity, sounds like something.
Sounds like the real deal.
Well, yeah, that's all I know about it, so I thought maybe you was something like-
There been any interest in it, or any engaged interest, or?
I don't know how many people actually know about it in the community, honestly, so.
I mean, it's really one of those things you need users in order to just do it.
I mean, otherwise, it doesn't really pay to put it up.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a year-to-year lease thing when you have it, that's what the short-term part of it is about, after a year, if you don't want to be in it, then you can get out of it.
Would a subscription to solar be cheaper, or what's saying?
I think they did have a rate near, I remember. See, I think that often, the way it looks, it's, there's some fill-in-the-blanks here, I think that may be a little dependent upon-
I think it depends on how much you purchase.
In the total purchased.
You know, like, the amount of kilowatts that you purchase, that you want to have, I think that kind of varies the price of what it'll cost.
You know, with the southern explosion on your maintenance shelf, where you can cover it all roofed up.
Can't put it on a rooftop, though.
Why?
That's just what-
You see it all over?
That's just what, through this project, it's either you gotta be on the stand, it's, basically, it's passed to the ground, it's about a, I think it's the size of like twelve panels, is all it is, the four KW panel is.
You can put it on a roof.
Not through this project, if you'd want to do something on your own.
These are business places, you know.
Yep.
All roof is covered.
Yeah, we, just kind of-
This is just kind of a community solar project.
Just as a little point of information on that, we looked at doing it at the school, we added some solar panels to the high school in the front. Yeah, and when we asked about putting them on the roof, they said that on an existing structure like that, you'd have to have an engineering survey done to put them on the roof to see what it would hold and was hold.
Structure would be solid.
And I, you know, I don't know anything about that, but, so we put them out front.
Oh, then you must stay away from there.
Yeah, I-
I know you have, because it has, just like having a snowboard on your roof, you know, your rafters have to be able to withstand all that weight.
Maybe that's something we should look into, get an interest, to see if anybody is interested, I would think.
Oh, are they at the school there?
They're at the high school, so I don't really do a lot with them, other than look at them when I drive by, so I've done that, but I don't know how they're producing or whatever, but-
First National Bank is going to put them on.
On the roof? Yeah.
I think this is more so geared towards the people that maybe don't have the means to put them up and still want to be green or whatever.
Yeah, that's kind of how it is.
Okay.
Can always send something on the next utility bill, for everybody to know about it, if they want.
So we don't need to do anything with this, this is just information?
Just something for you.
Just so you know, you're aware of the fact that there's something that you could go into.
And I'll get the, I'll give prices, what's, what the subscriptions would cost and stuff, so.
I mean, it kind of does say in there, but it's a little confusing, so.
That's all I have, though.
Do you let your store manager report, Keaton?
I don't really have much, um, we had our meeting and discussed Sunday sales obviously being passed and how that's gonna affect us. We kind of discussed and I think all agreed upon the fact that we should at least give it a trial run, because it could greatly affect our Saturday sales, because we have good Saturday sales and off sale. And people, if they know they don't need to rush in on Saturday at nine PM, because they're gonna be in New Elm grocery shopping on Sunday, probably, or wherever, out and about the next day, they're not going to. So, in that, we discussed closing two hours early on Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays at eleven PM versus one. A lot of nights, it's quiet in there by nine, Monday through Wednesday, and we're often, it's become kind of more of a hassle if we close at midnight. Somebody shows up at 12:45, if we stay until 1:30, nobody comes in from nine to 1:00 AM. So we just chose to make those set hours, eleven to eleven, Monday through Wednesday, to cut back those, sometimes a couple hours, sometimes an hour, whatever it may be, to do like eleven to, we didn't, we don't know for sure, we're not gonna open, obviously, until July. But we've kind of thought probably eleven to six or so, six or seven, and then close, so. And everything will be open, the bar and off sale and kitchen, so, just gonna try and run it unless staff and, we're just gonna have to work really, really, really hard that day. So, and kind of give it like a two-month time period to see how sales are, what, you know, if it's working, if it's not working, if it's affecting Saturday sales, just kind of do a trial run on it and then discuss it again, in probably August, or Sep-, August, September, sometime in there, so. That's pretty much all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you.
Police Chief Freylick's report?
Okay, in the month of February, we had a hundred and twenty calls. Anybody have any questions about those? And I also am going to put that 2012 Dodge Charger out for bids, so I'll need a motion to sell the old truck.
That's listed in the packet, if you're curious.
And I am gonna put it out on, by Bushy's, because he told me, put it out there, he did clean it up.
And with the information in the window, again, like-
Yeah.
Any questions on posting on the squad, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Rick makes motion?
I'll second it.
Josh seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I did, we did do a interview with another part-timer. I'd like to hire this guy, Derek Carlson. We need to, like, well, we have to do a background, so it would be just pending in the background for hire, if that's okay.
We do have a Personnel Committee, or does it not go through there, is that, or do you, does he hire those?
Did you interview with Personnel?
We never interviewed part-timers at Personnel. We do have two spots open, and I want to say this summer, we're probably gonna lose another one. But I'd like to get somebody on board to train them in, so, that's where I'm-
And that doesn't go through Personnel normally, and then rec election?
Usually a police committee, but we haven't met in frequent, so.
When's that next meeting supposed to be?
Next month, hopefully, I don't know.
That's me, I think, isn't it?
Six fifteen, but Jenny wasn't gonna be here, so.
Okay. Just to keep it with normal practice, you're making have one soon, and have him come interview just with other people as well?
All we do, all we do is, me and Denny interview as part-timers, that's how it's always been.
Mine was curious, what?
It's up to you guys, if you want to interview him again, I don't know why.
I think we should, trust your guys, depending on the officers, I just want to make sure it was done correctly as well, so.
We use the same interview thing throughout, so, we have to, we can't change the-
Well, no, I, well, they said it went through the Police Committee, and they said it went through, I just want to make sure it went through the avenues as well, so.
Usually, I'm still a police committee, and I make recommendations at the council.
But since you haven't met, they did.
That's what we usually do, I was gonna bring it up last time, but-
Anybody have any questions about that or concerns? Motion to approve hiring the part-timer?
Or Derek Carlson.
I'd be contingent on background study.
Contingent on the background study.
Yeah. I mean, that motion.
Josh makes motion.
It is a, a very intense background, so.
I'll second it.
Rick seconds?
It's not like, you know, if you start next week, it'll probably be a month or two. And our, the new squad car should be hopefully done this week, I'm hoping, but it is getting its lights on and all the other stuff that goes with it, so. And I did get, Denny brought up to me about his wage that was brought up at the Personnel Committee. Well, at the Personnel Committee, we decided to give Denny a dollar raise, two on top of this, what he got. Well, it got down, put down that Denny was only gonna get a dollar raise for training purposes only. Well, I need to tell you, but that's hard for somebody to manage that, unless he wrote down, "I worked this hour of training." But then, that would be harder for her to deal with. I, my understanding that it was approved at an extra dollar for Denny, because of the training that he does on top of what he's doing, he like trains people in, that was the training part. Like, even when he's not working, he gets phone calls for the part-timers and stuff like that, like questions, that I don't get, I only get the ones where like, hey, if I arrest this person. Danny gets the ones that are a lot simpler, obviously, hopefully.
Right, Danny?
I'm just seeing if we could correct it, correct it.
I guess I'd look to that Personnel Committee, what was your intent on that?
I guess there was a misunderstanding, I guess, I remember the Personnel Committee meeting, we asked you and Denny if you guys would be okay with an raise if we looked into hiring another officer, and Will said yes, and then he brought up the training and asked for the dollar an hour, so I, I did assume it was for training. So that was maybe my misunderstanding.
I do believe that's how it went, but then when we asked, like, Denny brought up, like, is a dollar for every time, and then I, I want to say that everybody agreed that it was, so.
There was a lot, a lot said that night, so.
Yeah.
That was supposed to be a ten-minute meeting. But I, I would be okay with, go ahead and correct that. I guess I'd make the recommendation of, do the dollar an hour raise.
That was the intent of your discussion when you did that, or you don't think that was the intent?
Hey, you know, I guess on my part, I, it's not the way I understood it, but maybe that's the way everyone else understood it, so.
I don't know, there was other persons, or employees in there, too, so.
Are you asking for my opinion?
Well, and-
I thought he was getting a dollar an hour raise in general, but that was just me, and I'm, I'm just saying that that was just from me sitting there trying to take in everything that was happening, but I thought in general, because of the extra stuff he was doing. And like you had said, that it was gonna be hard for him when he was at home, not working, to be monitoring all the extra stuff.
Right now, Denny doesn't, like, if he gets a phone call, I know we've done it in the past, if we got a call, we'd put down like an hour or something like that, but Denny doesn't put nothing down, so. Maybe he gets a phone call or a question or something.
Kind of washes itself out, yeah, then.
Yeah. He doesn't put no time down, so, and a lot of times, he does come in with the person and sits there and helps him, and he doesn't get paid to do that, he doesn't write it down, so. I know I keep telling him to do it, but-
I guess, I don't know.
Well, I'll vote for whatever you think.
You want to make a motion?
I'm not on that committee, so I don't- I'm not on that committee, so I don't...
I can see where everybody thought it was for training.
Yeah.
That's how it was said, a dollar more for training.
I can see, I'll, I'm gonna stick with that.
Everyone, because I asked the question and it came back two different ways and another employee said, that's just for training. And I, that's when I started questioning, I thought, well, maybe I wrote it down wrong. So then I emailed you guys for clarification and it came back, training. So, I guess however you want to do it now. I don't think anybody really made a mistake anywhere.
I don't think so either.
Because it was, Denny asked for a dollar for training. Everybody assumed it was for when he was training.
Yeah. I, I'd be okay with doing the dollar an hour raise.
No other questions? We get a motion for the dollar an hour pass to the board? Rick makes the motion?
I'll second it.
Josh seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No speeding tickets now for us.
Yeah.
DE, no, there's no D's. It's D E R.
And just cannot, that motion did carries to approve the hiring of a part-time officer pending background check. Cut me off before I could say that.
Oh, okay.
But that did pass.
You kind of didn't let him finish.
I did?
I just, just let the record show that that did carry.
That's all I got.
Okay, and then the committee reports, I guess the EDA minutes, about the only one. Cause Caitlin kind of went through her meeting and there's more there, but... And other than the pledge, Marsh, I guess I couldn't make that meeting. Was there much else discussed after the EDA meeting?
The minutes are...
Oh, yeah, okay. So if there's any questions about the minutes? For the EDA meetings? Can you hear parts of the middle back there? Now, just kind of move on to liquor store meeting. Was there any questions about that other than what Caitlin discussed? Don't think, have you got anywhere in the bathroom discussion, or I suppose you just had that last Tuesday, didn't you?
Mike is checking on a couple things.
I'll just...
Yeah.
But yeah, that was only a week ago, so I guess it isn't that time. Any other questions on either of those?
It's your tobacco incident town.
So is there any other correspondences involved? I guess, well, Marsh's award she accepted here for the City of Excellence.
That's, that's actually for RS fiber.
Yeah, it includes all the eight communities included, the way it looks.
Yes, it was all the communities that went into RS fiber project. The broadband.
Otherwise, there's none. Any other council concerns that you, that should require formal action, if you put on next month's agenda? Not going to get a motion to do it during the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Ralph makes the motion?
I'll second it.
Rick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.